Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, August 14, 2024. It's 2:03 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina McKee, and Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. Public virtual attendance available on Thurston County YouTube Channel, although there are two executive sessions embedded in the agenda, so there will be pauses of livestream for those pieces of the afternoon agenda. We're here until 4:30 to cover the five items that are laid out in the agenda. First up is a B O C C Courthouse Campus Subcommittee Update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time that the Commission has allowed the Subcommittee to take a look at this. Before I begin, I wanted to see if the Chair of the Subcommittee had anything you wanted to say, or you want us just to jump straight?
Let's just jump right into it.
Perfect. And as I begin, I'd like to ask Summer Miller just to come up and join the table. She's our interim Budget and Fiscal Manager for the Commissioner's Office. And while she is busy with a lot of other things, and not necessarily going to be an expert on the information covered, I just thought it would be good for her to be sitting here. As we start, I want to thank all of our stakeholders. There's a lot going on in the county right now, and their responsiveness and communication to not only myself, but to our team, and helping us by identifying emerging issues as we talk through this has been extremely helpful. So those that are available in person, who have been available, are available online. We appreciate their participation. Today, what we're going to cover is the last presentation we gave to the Subcommittee and the direction we've received from the Subcommittee to bring this to the full board conversation. Our desire today is to bring these topics forward, knowing that in each of these topics, there's a lot more research to be done. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the presentation. Can we go to the next slide? All right, this is still not going right. Okay. And so part of, in giving this presentation, because Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, is out on a vacation right now, and so we'll go through some of these details. The county is currently planning to issue a $32 million bond in late September of 2024. And there's the breakout of the potential expenses that would ultimately come before the Board. What we wanted to show is the potential bond capacity as an option. It's not necessarily our recommendation, but it is just showing that what the county could afford, or what's the configuration of what we could afford in the future. And so the current bond proceeds could be used for these projects, which could allow capacity in the REIT I in the amount of the bond payments. So the idea there being, if we were to take the current bond that we have, 50 million, and I believe, is it five to seven million that's currently in commitment right now?
About 7.5.
7.5 million that's in commitment right now. If we were to take the remaining of those funds and switch around, we could potentially have REIT I funding available for additional projects in the future, if that's the Board's direction. Go to the next slide. Okay. There's approximately 43 million remains of the 22 bond of the, well, 42.5 of the 50 million proceeds. Funds may be used for land purchase, construction, or remodel. They may not be used for leases, or maintenance, or operating costs. And again, our desire of putting this together is just to show the Board what's the available options we have in the use of the funds that we already have secured. Bond payments are currently made by REIT I fund. There's no additional capacity in the REIT funding streams that are coming in. In 2024, 2025, payments are 2.3 million. In 2026, in future year payments are 3.5 million. And so what we're watching is the growth of those funds also needing to keep up with the increasing of the bond payments. 2024 REIT I revenue is currently estimated to be approximately 2.8, with three point, with three to 5% growth in future years, which is enough to cover bond payments. And the reason for this slide is just to show that we really are at the, at the top of our ceiling in using the REIT I funding for any additional bond capacity. Next slide, please. Property value. The property owned by the county could be sold to offset the price of the new property or lease. And what, what we want to highlight is that in Slide 5, which we'll get to, the assessed value of the properties. Now, we're going based on assessed value, but Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't done an official appraisal. Is that correct?
Since 2017.
And so, one of the recommendations that we would have for the Board's consideration is not to rely just on assessed value, but to really go out and officially appraise the properties. And our hope would be that if we could appraise the properties, that the appraisal would come back at a higher amount, if it's highest and best use. Other properties owned by the county could either be used for specific purposes, such as Tilly Campus, or Public Works, or Thurston County Correction Center. Bacon properties owned by the county have very little value, as they are, for the most part, floodland, wetlands, and utility set, set-asides. And part of that point, Board, is the question of what available resources or assets do we have as part of this fiscal equation that we're bringing together. Next slide. Here's Slide 5, where we talk about the appraised values. And as Rick mentioned, in 2017, we did an appraisal for Buildings 1 through 6, which at that time, Rick, maybe you can speak to that a little bit, the appraisal that was done and the amounts that were provided?
Yes. Rick Thomas with our Central Services Group. The appraisal that was done in April of 2017, I took a look at Buildings 1, 2, and 3, which are our main courthouse buildings up on the hilltop, as well as Buildings 4, 5, and 6, that are on the adjacent block. And a couple of things to note on that. We did use the highest and best use for commercial or speculative residential for Buildings 1 through 3. And then the highest and best use was commercial for Buildings 4 and 5. That appraisal came out to be a total of $7.8 million. To be noted on that, however, if you could go to the next slide, Tom, maybe just really quickly there. This is a map of the current zoning designations up on the hilltop. And I know the map is a little hard to see there, but what we really want to point out is kind of on the right center, it has kind of a red outlined area that says "public use." That is the specific area where the Buildings 1 through 3 are located. And it, it's a, it's a very special designation, and it specifically is designated now as public use for courthouse. And so if we were to try to sell this property, that zoning would have to be changed. And we've talked to the City of Olympia back in 2018. They didn't think there'd be any particular problem with doing that. They've been a partner with us kind of throughout, but we would have to go through that scenario. I don't know how that would change the appraisal one way or the other, but if everyone knew that it wasn't set aside for courthouse, the appraisal could potentially show something different, which would be a private development of some sort instead of governmental.
Thank you. Go to the next slide, please. The other part of the equation for us in looking at what our fiscal capacity is, is leases. The ability to create fiscal capacity for options is based on the county's ability to end current leases. There's one major lease the county pays, the atrium. That's where we're at today. Annual lease payment for the atrium include maintenance, operation costs approximately 3.25 million. Payments are approximately 2 million general fund and 1.3 million other funds. The current lease at the atrium expires in 2029. There's no early exit clause, which is one of the items that the Subcommittee asked us to look into. So what that shows us that when we end the lease at the atrium, that we take that ability to pay into a new lease, that's the amount that we would take with us. And we can go into, that's part of the equation. And this is information that we asked our fiscal team to look into. Now, what about reserves or options there? There's currently no reserves available to add to capacity for future capital project. Part of that is because the general fund, beginning fund balance is 38.9 million. It's anticipated to be considerably less at the end of the year. The fund balance is necessary to address the current structural fiscal deficit over the next three to eight years. That was my question to staff about what are, what available options do we have with, let's say, the fund balance. But you've all seen the financial model, how that fund balance is spent out over the next little while. So Budget Stabilization Fund has a balance of 4 million. It's designated for emergencies. And the REIT I fund has a current balance that is sufficient to meet bond payments and cash flow needs under the process. Any questions?
If you're taking questions, when you looked at the appraisals, did you make any determination if it was just the land, or was there a demolition cost affiliated with that? Because I don't know what somebody's going to do with that jail. It's got to be torn down. How much does that depreciate the value? It certainly is not enough.
Right. The appraisal that was done did determine that the existing buildings that were particularly Buildings 1, 2, and 3 had no value.
No commercial value.
And so it did take into account dollars to demolish those buildings in order to bring it back to a land-only position.
So it's land-only, basically.
Correct.
Did you look at the, like you gave us appraisal from 2017, but then assessment from 2024? What was the assessment from 2017? Like, was there, was there that big of a mismatch back then?
There, I don't remember the numbers for sure, but I, if my memory serves me right, the assessed value was about twice as much as the appraised value.
Okay. But I think that's an opportunity that if, that's the direction and the will of the Board, to take a look at what a commercial appraisal would look like. And we can specify the parameters of that, so that we can get a usable cost to potential developer, if that's something we're interested in.
But that still would be just for raw land, right? I mean, would that be thinking of raw land? Because it seems like we're hearing that there's no value in buildings.
Yeah. I mean, you can set the parameters to get an appraisal for just the land, or the appraisal for current structures, although knowing that our team is saying that their buildings are past their useful life, and the major systems are compromised. I mean, it's, I don't know how much value, but we can have an alternative to show what, what those may provide. We do think, though, that based on, you know, very preliminary information, that if that land is going to be valuable, it would be valuable to develop, and not necessarily for someone to move into those buildings, because they'd have the same challenges that we're facing.
I guess just as a follow-up question, is that some kind of low-income housing over at the, where the West Water used to be? Is that what the city is doing with that now?
Front line?
Yeah. Well, I've been here a long time. That's why I use old terms, I guess. So I'm, because that could affect the value of the property. So do we know?
I do not personally know.
Nobody knows?
I know it's going to be made residential. I don't know the specifics of the demographic.
Yeah. I mean, if it was upper-end condos, that's one thing. If it's low-income housing, that's another thing for value. It's adjoining property.
All right. If we go to the next slide here, and again, just, this is what we can afford. And the first bullet point is a highly conceptual number. It's not like it's a developed number. The team's like making sure that we caveat that. But a new courthouse, an only courthouse function, would cost approximately 250 million. Obviously, we'd have to program that out and plan it out. A public-private partnership lease to own or design-build project would all require annual payments of approximately the same amount. And that's something that, again, would require additional financial review. So this is the team's four weeks, five weeks' worth of work. But that's preliminary assessment.
Okay, I got it. It, it took me a while to like, when, when we say courthouse, in the past, we've been saying courthouse to talk about all
Yes.
government functions. And when we've said courthouse, we were referring to the entire hilltop campus, and it had executive functions, the auditor's office. But for our purposes now, when we say courthouse going forward, we're strictly talking about courthouse functions.
Well, in, in this, in this configuration, we, so yes, Commissioner?
Because before, we were saying $450 million to build a courthouse, but that was a courthouse that also was the seat of the county government, was also offices. But now we're saying 250 million for a courthouse.
That's correct. Yeah. Team, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I think, are you saying court functions and general administration functions, just court functions? Is that your question?
And that says 250 million dollars to build a courthouse. That is building, a building for just
Court functions.
Court functions.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
The whole law and justice component.
Yeah, yeah. But so the words are important, because it confused my simple
It's not the Commissioner's Office. It's not the other elected office. It's not all the other departments that are part of that complex.
And I don't think it would be the Sheriff's Office either. So not all of the law and justice component, but the major part of it.
As long as everybody gets that.
So I appreciate the clarification. So for either a public-private partnership or design-build project, if we use currently available bond proceeds and 43 million, and sold the hilltop property, and again, we're using assessed value, we have to do an appraisal, but the team is just using the number that they have before we commission any work. We would need to, we'd need an additional 180 million. The options are a levy lift or an unlimited general obligation bond. Now, that's not our recommendation. That's just stated as a fact, based on the capacity that we have internal. Go to the next slide, please.
And that's, that is 250 minus the bond, minus the sale of the property.
Right. So that number will, could be less. If the, if the property appraises for much more, which we would hope it would, and an appraisal, official appraisal would tell us the, the real value of that property, then that would leverage that amount even more. All right. And then there was a request for some information on levy lift. Levy lift requires a simple majority vote. Levy lift for any type of capital project may be for a maximum of 25 years. Using bond payments as an example, 180 million times 5% interest over 23 years. And again, the team wants to caution and say, Leonard, this is preliminary information. We would need to work with bond counsel to dial all of that in. But for the sake of conversation and a rough directional component, this is what, what they've come up with, would be equal 13.4 million, using the 2024 Thurston County property value of 60 billion, the general fund levy rate would be increased by 22 cents per 1,000.
And that 13.4 is per year payment?
Yes.
That should, it should say that, so there's no doubt about that.
All right. Next slide, please. So also, what the Subcommittee asked the team to do, and very proud of the team that they're working under tight timelines. We have, thankful for the Subcommittee giving us a couple of weeks to review some of this information, put together an interim option for the courthouse continuation project, predicated on the county going after a long-term viable solution. And that's, you have heard from some stakeholders that they'd be willing to forego the remodel if, and there's a very big if, if the county were in agreement on a viable long-term solution. And in looking at that, what could we do? The team came up with a high-level approach. They have been able to, in an overview, talk, to communicate some of this to stakeholders. However, there's a lot more stakeholder input that would need to take place, including a combined meeting with all stakeholders and the project team and the county leadership team, discuss different operational dynamic pros, pros and cons. And we would want to have that, if that's the Commission's ultimate direction. But with that, I'm going to turn over to Rick and Tom, so you can kind of walk the Commissioners through what you've put together and some of your thoughts. And maybe at the outset, let's explain the bond and other funding components, because I know that that, we explained it after the fact, and then everyone was like, what? So maybe you could start there.
Okay. Tom Strumpke, Project Manager with Central Services. So we were tasked to look at a more of a minimal renovation for the buildings in question. So we went back and looked at it. It's a seven-step process of moving everybody around. It's a jigsaw puzzle. And we have a timeframe there. And when you see the numbers there for the bond, that's the present bond that we have, and using those numbers. And the other funding is for furniture and equipment. That, under recent, pointed out that we can't buy furniture with the bond money. So that's why there's a separate number for that source. And when those numbers for the other funding, that's providing all-new furniture in those areas. With my talks with stakeholders, we began by saying, we'd like to give you all-new furniture. That was way back a year ago when I started talking to them. But depending on the cost of what happens, that number will shrink. And then when we got the information from the state auditors, when we can't buy the furniture with the bond proceeds, they understand that number shrunk even more. So we put it at a high-level base case scenario. If we could find other sources to pay for the furniture, that's the numbers on the right.
That was new information for us last week. I think you guys have all been
That was, this was the slide where I thought that the full board needed to be aware of because of funding implications. And, you know, the other funding, I mean, I'm seeing the general fund impact. Really, I don't see what other funding could be used, but this was the slide where I was, I felt that the full board really needed to, to know that there would be implications in it and
There's no plan that's not budgeted anywhere, from my understanding.
Correct. So when we started the project, we were estimated 2.5 million in the whole project for furniture, FFD, fixed furniture and equipment. It's the budget line item. And then till recently, we're told that that budget line can't be in our budget. So that's why we presented it to you, to let you know that that's required other funding.
We, we had a good suggestion, though, the thrift store option. I liked that.
Bring your own chair.
Well, you know, taxpayers appreciate it when you try to save money. I know that.
So what the team did is they came up with a multi-step approach for what's the, what's an interim configuration and remodel that we could do for a much more modest amount of funds to get us a time, if the direction to the Commission was to pivot from the current remodel project that's underway to the long, to exploring a long-term solution. This is a plan that the team would want to walk you through. So Tom, you want to continue?
Sure. So the first step is do the minimal renovations to Building 1, Level 2. And the biggest part of that is where the CPED area is, that's not useful for anybody else in its current configuration. So that 500K to a million would be renovating that aspect of it, carpet and paint, the second level. Once that's completed, PAO can move from Building 2 and 5, and their family juvenile court personnel over to Building 1. Then the next step would be Building 2, Level 2, the vacated area of PAO, would be opened up to bring pre-trial from Building 4 into that area. Again, a minimal renovation, putting a wall up to divide the space, because it's more than they need. So we divide it up between them, and the remainder of the space would be for Superior Court. We liked that space just because it had a reception area that the PAO already has there. They could use that very conveniently for their operations. Step three would be Level 1, minimal renovations. Part of PAO would go to the first floor as well, and then also leave an area in the old treasurer's area for possible collection of the resource hub. Step forward would be moving family services, which is currently in Building 5. They can move over to the vacated family juvenile court area. And again, the numbers are there that take 500K to do the renovations for the family juvenile court and some other funding for furniture.
Tom, I'm going to interrupt just for a quick second to make a little clarity, because we do have several stakeholders here. Tom did have a chance to talk with the stakeholders. I'm going to say, after this plan was put together, that quite honestly was just, it was put together without any input, because we just wanted to see if there's anything viable. In further conversations with the stakeholders, there, there are some competing needs from the groups that will certainly have to be vetted through a system, as County Manager mentioned, with the entire group. So as we're going through it, please don't read this as though this is the plan. This is a plan that could work, but we can still, we still have to vet some things out. The dollar amounts that we're laying out here, though, are probably pretty similar regarding, you know, in regards to whichever direction we actually decide to go.
And what the Commissioner, what I would say is, rather than describe this as a plan, I would describe it as an exercise. An exercise of looking, what are options, knowing that we'd have to operationalize that with our stakeholders to come up with a real set plan. And, and our desire was following the Subcommittee's direction to explore this. We would need the full board a decision to then move this forward, and then take it to the next level, which would be to develop the exercise into a really well-thought-out plan.
And do you have any plan in there about roof? Roof on anything to maintain the building to keep it from falling down once we paint the walls? So is there anything in there? Lifespan of what the existing roofs are now? How long would they last? would they last? Or do we have to do roofs? And what about HVAC?
So currently, we have a project to re-roof building three.
Yes.
That may come before you.
But that's not covering this, is it?
No, that, that would be paid for out of our building reserves specifically.
So we would be able to have roofs on whatever we do?
Correct.
Okay.
Not paid out of the bond funds.
Okay, thank you.
So building three is covered, and I do know that there's some.
And then the valuations of building one and two, they believe the life, we could get another five to ten years out of the, out of the roof.
Okay, okay.
Even though they're, been there a while, they're in decent shape based on the consultant's review of them.
Good questions, Commissioner, because we're talking about viability of those buildings for a period of time. Want to continue, Tom?
So then, step five is, once the sheriff vacates building three, allow probation to move up and for district court to expand in that vacated area. In this plan, we didn't budget any money for construction and minimal amounts for furniture to go into that new occupied space. Step six is allow the superior court to expand into the vacated PAO area, building two, level two, that's not occupied by pre-trial. Again, we only had minimum amount of worth there to build some access to it and dividing the spaces off. And then finally, step seven would move public defense from building six and seven into building five, as is, no construction cost and minimal amounts for furniture. And so the results of doing this, by vacating buildings four, six, and seven, it makes it available for constructing a new courthouse or possibly administration building, or to sell the land up there. So putting it all together, depending on which direction we get, we're estimating spending one to two million of bond to finish these minimal upgrades, leaving you the forty million for future projects. Also, we need five-hundred to a hundred million in other funding to provide furniture and equipment. And that's, we're open for questions.
Again, those numbers are conceptual. If the, the commission so desires, the team directs the team to formalize this plan, and we could come back with some more firmer numbers after more input and the process of really sitting down and planning this out. Are there any questions at this point?
The, the furniture estimates, it was kind of mentioned that, kind of when this plan first came out, jump in if I'm saying this wrong, but when the plan first came out, a lot of the stakeholders said, hey, go, go through and look at the furniture we already have, but we, we plan on kind of buying new stuff. And so the expectations were a little different, and given that, you know, kind of the landscape has changed, we're asking the stakeholders to take another consideration of the available furniture that's sitting in the buildings, because we may need to use that stuff. So that number I'm thinking is kind of in flux.
And part of that is, yes, we have a lot of cubicles in a lot of the buildings, but it's a change of views. We have administrative persons like in CPED processing non-confidential information, they can sit next to each other. But if you bring attorneys in from PAO or public defense, now they need an enclosed office, so now they don't have that, and so they have to adjust their working operations to meet what's currently available in there.
And I think that we can further answer that question, once we know what, if we were going to go this direction, once we know what program to be in these buildings, allows us to take a look. But if that's one of the commissioner's direction is, let's recycle, reuse, and try to be as responsible as possible, it's an opportunity for us to talk with stakeholders about current configurations and what, what could be available for use.
I'd like to make just one more note in regards to the one-to-mill, one-to-two-million dollars of construction. That, I mean, that's a very, very minimalist amount of work that we would do. It's really assuming that we're almost going to be moving people in as-is, and so there, there could not be very many real changes made to the space for that kind of money. It's just, it's minor, minor changes in order to make people fit.
Well, be a, a better number that would be satisfying.
You know, um.
What's a high and low?
You know, I, I would say realistically, five million dollars gives us enough to be able to make it amenable for the next five to ten years, if it takes that long for us to get the big plan together. This plan or this exercise we went through, quite honestly, doesn't, doesn't do very much for giving any of the groups expanded space, other than a little bit more for PAO and, and probably enough for the public defense for ten-plus-ish years. But it, it really doesn't give any expansion to the courts as far as courtrooms. It does give them a little bit of elbow room, maybe for the administrative, but it, it's, it's not very much.
And again, this would be a, a bridge plan to get us to a long-term solution.
The subcommittee was, got to a point where it just felt like it was time to share information and kind of look for some, some buy-in and some guidance from the rest of the, the commission as we look to minimize our kind of short-term spending on the courthouse and try to find a long-term solution, which we, we think we're coming to.
I guess following up on that, one of the comments made at one of the, I believe it was the last subcommittee meeting, was Commissioner Mejia, I'll just paraphrase, the long shot, and that was that, would we be able to get some assistance from the state? Because we do a lot of the state's business. And I think you made mention to somebody from commerce by the name of Dunn.
Stephen Dunk.
Duncan, oh, that's the fellow that comes to our.
Yeah, he's always at the steady meetings.
Steady meetings.
Sat with Leonard and I.
Yeah. Anything there, I mean, as, as a potential, I mean, I know that's farther down the road.
Sure.
But I'm just curious if there's any hope there. I mean, it's a long shot, I realize that.
What we have, Stephen, is an invitation to say, bring your ideas, county, and, and your team, and come and sit with the, the state's Department of Commerce team, so that we can help find pathways. Because what he explained to me is, if you start to communicate ideas and opportunities to them, they have a creative way of saying, well, we were thinking about this in the future, we're thinking about that. And, and Commissioner, that's a great segue to anything we decide to do. I believe that we're going to need support and help to take this situation that has been defined as a, and it's, one of the commissioners explained to me, this has been a decade's issue, problem, if you will. We have to really figure out, how do we reposition this to be an opportunity? And whether it's courthouse or the property, uh, for the current courthouse complex, changing that, that narrative, if that's the direction of the commission, to find a long-term solution, I think that is part of bringing people to the table, to say, we have an opportunity, this is what that opportunity looks like. How do we collaborate? How do we bring stakeholders to the table? There's an opportunity for us to do that with, as Rick mentioned, with the city of Olympia, if and when we're ready, about what, what does the current courthouse complex become? Can it be rezoned? And so those are, I, I think, things we need to be thinking about as we move this forward, if, if that's the commission's will.
Yeah, we, we put this on the top of our legislative agenda, and, and we do start looking for money. That, the, the thing with Stephen Dunk, I did that with Tenino like six years ago, and we just laid out all our i- projects and ideas, and then, and it, it, it paid dividends.
It paid off.
Absolutely did it, yeah.
Well, I kind of, to continue that segue, if you will, is, I've been here for a lot of years watching this develop and kind of ups and downs, I guess, but I really think, and, and I'm not saying anything I haven't said early on, we need to think about what we're going to do. I kind of like this plan, this layout of how this could be an interim position, if you will. But we, we need to be building trust in the community. If we're going to be going to the community and asking them for money in whatever fashion we proceed, we have to have that trust, and, and to build that trust, we need to, well, we need to fix quite a few things that we, we, we don't have that trust in the community, is my estimation, and we haven't improved it lately. And, and I kind of go back in history, because I'm along, I've been around here a long time, but, I mean, and that history is not all that positive, and the public does remember it. We lost a nine-oh, a sixteen-million-dollar lawsuit against the county, and it was ruled nine-oh in our Washington State Supreme Court against the county. So that goes all the way back to sixteen or something, and, and starting there and coming forward. And we need to be thinking at every step, how do we try to do the best job we can do for our community? And by doing that, and whether that's issuing permits quicker, solving problems quicker, whatever it is, to build trust, because the aw shits of the world get all the attention. So when someone comes in and they complain, they've been working on this five years and haven't got anywhere with the county, that's the thing that is talked about the most, rather than when they come in and the county's got a lot of good people, doing a lot of good things, but they come in and they get kind of what they need in a timely fashion, and they go out the door and do their project, that just doesn't get as much recognition. And I know that happens all the way. So we, we need to, all the time, we need to minimize the aw shucks, uh, aspect of that. And so I think that has to be a crucial part of whatever we do, is start building that trust. And I just don't see that we've done it yet. It's never too late to start doing the right thing, and today's that start, as far as I'm concerned. Try to get things going, try to be, get as, as positive as we can. I hate to even say that in a public meeting, what I'm talking about, but we're under certain guidelines by the state law that requires us to have conversations in public. And I think that we need to push to start building trust so that we can present a plan, like staff has presented, well-thought-out, so that we got a plan moving forward, and along with that plan, here's the rest of the process, but we need the public to kind of help us. Well, I want to help the public, I want them to want to help us. And for us, it takes, I think, a kind of a change in attitude in how we're doing business. That's all. I think it's a great, great potential. So that's my two cents.
Chair, unless there are any other questions, I think the staff are done with this presentation.
I, I mean, I'm curious, because I wasn't part of any of it, so I'm just, is, since there's no space, I mean, what is the point of this interim plan? Is it just because we have an empty building in building one and you're trying to fill it? I mean, what is, why would we not just do nothing? Just stop everything and then develop the long-term plan? What is the, why would we even spend the one-point-seven million plus one-point-one million? Is it just to kind of undo what we've started doing this year, or what, what does it accomplish? You said, doesn't give anyone any space.
Well, it, to me, there's two things that this does. One, it does give a little bit more space for the PAO.
Okay.
And they are very tight right now. It also gives more space for the public defense. Even if we were to move them into building four, they're going to outgrow that space five to seven years from now, and building five gives them some more space than building four for a longer term.
Because of the requirements, case load, that's what, that's what we're anticipating having to have.
And, yeah, and I'm sorry, Leonard.
Yeah, no, no.
And I, and I would say, the second is, that gives us the ability to completely vacate the block that we own, where we have buildings four, six, and seven. And that, and, and again, we've already talked, building six isn't worth saving at some point, that just needs to be demoed. Building seven would need a bit of work to be a real good functioning building. Building four has some work that needs to be done, it can kind of be used, but from a, a perspective of making property available to either sell or to be used as a place to build a new courthouse, this plan allows that to be a vacated block that could be used for something.
So from the subcommittee's standpoint, this was a request from the stakeholders, and that's why we directed staff to present us with options, as we heard from, or it's the prosecutor, public defense, pre-trial services, this was all a request of, we're okay with moving forward with the long-term option, but can we just, can we move into those empty spaces, because we're, we need those, we need that room? And so this was kind of like an in-between of.
So what does it say? It says, pre-trial from building four, resource hub from building four, to, to where? Doesn't say to where.
To building one, or, or, back up, pre-trial going to building two, level two, resource hub to building one, level one.
However, I, I really want to stress again, this is just an exercise we've gone through. We, we know we have enough space in building one, so that we could move pre-trial and hub into building one if we needed to, in order to be able to vacate that block. So ultimately, what we're saying is that between building one and building five, along with the courts primarily still being in buildings two and three, we have enough space up on the Hilltop to move everybody into those spaces in order to vacate buildings four, six, and seven.
What would pre-trial and resource hub have, exactly the same as it has now?
Hub would actually have a little more space than what they have now, particularly if we came into building one. Building five, again, there's an option to look at there. Pre-trial would be a little bit more than they had before, not a lot, but it gives them a few more, a few more places to have staff.
Chair, I think one of the reasons why they, they did this exercise was, they were trying to leverage the vacation of the block as part of the assets that, that could come into play, if that's what the board wanted to do. So it becomes an asset for, uh, two, for two concepts. Is that a place where a new administrative office could be built, if there's a public-private partnership that's explored? Or two, is that an area that could be sold off as a first installment, that capital used, and then put towards purchase of something else?
I guess I would want to know, I mean, seven-point-eight million dollars isn't going to go very far for the kind of project, and I would never, and I'm on the record, I'm never going to vote for a, a new project on the Hilltop, so I'm just curious what that does for, you know.
And, and I think as part of our presentation, there's the two-part, there's this part, and then there's a part that the team wants to explore and.
Not necessarily recommending a new project on the Hilltop. I mean, if it's worth twenty-five for thirty million, that's something.
Yeah, but.
If it's worth seven million.
That's not necessarily the recommendation. There's the second part in the executive session that, that we can explore.
Okay, well, that, thanks you for that.
Back to you.
Anybody else? We're just looking for the minimal amount of investment we can make in the Hilltop to use it for the next five years.
Okay.
In your calculations, you made mention of, of down the road, what the needs would be. Did you take into consideration public defense with this new Supreme Court? No, yeah, I guess it's, the courts are going to say, well, we can only have so many caseloads per, so many cases per defense attorney. Was that kind of taken into the mix as well?
That's why we kind of looked at building five as maybe being the best option for public.
Okay, so it kind of covered that aspect.
Do you have a percentage on that? Like what, how much more from buildings, wherever they are now, four and seven, to building five? Is that a thirty percent increase or a ten percent increase for them? I know we've got that somewhere on paper, but I don't recall the.
Yeah, we can, if we don't have it on hand, we can get it to you. I think why the, the team is pausing is, as they took this exercise to stakeholders, stakeholders had some ideas of their own, like, whoa, what, if that's what we're working with, I think what we need is an opportunity, if this is the direction the board gives, to sit with the stakeholders and have a bit of a puzzle-making, uh, opportunity to figure out space needs, opportunities, and how all this fits. But there was, uh, there was an interest in some of the stakeholders to, to say, well, this could work better for us, this could be a potential for us. I don't think the team has that all dialed in, and, and they don't want to make the mistake of speaking on behalf of a stakeholder saying.
I'm just making, Commissioner Edwards' point, I mean, if it's a seven percent increase in space, these new caseload standards are saying you're going to have to double the number of public defenders, so a hundred percent. So seven percent more space in building five isn't going to do anything for us.
Sure.
In terms of what we're going to need to do, if these caseload standards get implemented and.
Yeah.
You know, so just to try to understand. You know, so just to try to understand, are, are we solving a problem, or is it just?
Yeah, what, what, we'll solve a problem for roughly about five to seven years. Because what we, what I know from the situation, Rob probably can speak a little bit more to it, is there's a phased approach, isn't there, Rob? Um, as to the staffing that will come into play.
Three years.
Basically over three years, yeah. And so this will, by the time they staff up, I think what they're trying to do is get them situated. This would not be a forever plan, but it would get them to a certain point. Whatever we were to move into would be a forever.
I guess following up on that, um, this gets us that five to seven years, it sounds like, to come up with the real plan. And also, the amount of time it would take, we can build that community trust during that period of time. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the sheriff's office as an example of what went on, uh, over the last couple of years, in which the county voted for this increase, uh, to fund law and justice and the prosecutor and, uh, the auditor's office. And I believe that's because they saw a change in what was going on at the sheriff's office, and they liked that change. And I think that made a big difference towards building that trust. And I think we can do the same thing at the county level in all other aspects. And, and I guess I'll use the road department as an example. They, they do a heck of a job with the minimum amount of money. And my phone never rings about the road department. Uh, I'm mad at them. There's, you know, potholes, or, you know, how come they blocked us off? And so there are places where we can always do better. And this will give us the time, uh, to develop that trust in the community. And then we can go to the community as an extension of this plan and say, look at, here's what we've been doing, and here's where we want to go. Here's, we want your help to do it, and I think they'll come on board, providing we don't have too many missteps. I don't know, missteps are whatever are the aw shucks of the world. The findings from the state auditor, that doesn't help us any. So all those kind of things, we need to alleviate that and get by all those, uh, issues. I guess I'll just let it go. I mean, we're not perfect.
I think you, you build trust by coming up with a solid.
Yes, this, and this is a good plan?
You know, saying, yes, we, you know, a, a new courthouse was going to cost 450 million dollars, but we've come up with a plan to leverage the assets that we have, and now we're only asking for 180 million, and we're getting creative. And, you know, that, that's, to me, in my mind, that's how you build that trust.
I'll be one of those constituents voting for that.
Yeah, you heard it here.
And I, I also think we, we look for ways to build community partnership and value in, in whatever we build or what, what goes out there, that it's not just seen as these are, you know, new staff offices, but what services and other amenities can you add into? There's lots of oper- uh, examples of things, municipal buildings that are built with, with private, with partners that come in and they, there's a level of service or, or amenity-based, uh, service that's provided. And it's seen a little bit differently. And so I think that's an opportunity, depending on, uh, commission direction, for us to really strategize about how we go forward.
For that topic? Okay, thank you guys.
Good job.
Onto our next topic.
Good job.
We have two executive sessions. R C W 4231101B, actually both of them are under that same sec- subsection. Consider selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause likelihood of increased price. Thirty minutes estimated for, uh, purchase of a building topic. And another 30 minutes estimated for purchase of a building sheriff's office topic. Board action may follow. It's 2:54. We'll be in executive session until 3:54.
Okay, we're back at three fifty-seven out of our executive sessions. No formal board actions being taken. We have item four now, resolution for the purchase of Thurston County Sheriff's Office vehicles and radios. There's a proposed motion, this was, came up yesterday morning. We're just trying to move this forward because there's a time sensitivity. There's been an issue raised about availability of public comment and just, acrylic of the board talked to council and just in an abundance of caution, I'm just gonna permit the public There's some questions about that, but it'd just be easier to address it that way, so I'm gonna have that before we take any action. Is there anything we need to do to discuss? The item I know was discussed yesterday morning.
Yeah, Bruce and Josh are here, they can give a quick overview of the context if you don't mind sharing.
Okay, let's do that, and then we'll open for public comment, and then we'll see if there's any board action.
Thank you. Joshua Cummings, Assistant County Manager for Thurston County, and we have Bruce Werbaugh here with us, our interim Central Services Director, also expert in the fleet for our group. And so, we have a, this is kind of an urgent issue, which is why we're asking for this resolution consideration outside of the standard process. The goal here is to serve the sheriff's office. Ford Motor Company has a window for ordering that's open and closes when they've fulfilled whatever orders they're going to receive for the coming year, and we don't have access or privy to knowing when that's going to be. So, time is of the essence so that we have the order placed with Ford Motor Company for the coming year, 2025, for the new officers that are coming on board because of the public safety sales tax. And so, all of these kind of moving pieces, there is a need to ensure that we get all of our ducks in a line, and that we have full buy-in from the Board of County Commissioners. We have the funding path created through the Budget Office appropriate, and part of that was that we take this resolution to have a full accounting of the decision being made so that it was, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. Anything more technical to add? Yeah, please.
I could, Josh. The genesis of this was Sheriff Sanders coming and explaining that as the new positions are being brought on, and he's doing a great job bringing laterals into the organization, their lead-up time is much faster. So, there's been a couple situations where there's a bit of a backlog taking place. Our commitment to the sheriff was to come up with a plan on how do we alleviate some of that backlog, so that when deputies are ready to start their patrol, they have the necessary equipment, and the vehicles is a main part of that. So, the team came up with an approach, and looking at that approach, it was determined that we needed to bring this before the board, and I do appreciate Josh raising that up so that it wasn't a misstep that was taken internally, but that is, let's bring this before the board, cross the Ts, dot the Is. And then, in our last agenda conversation, board members brought up that, well, if time is of the essence, there was an openness to hear it earlier than the twentieth meeting, and so we appreciate, again, staff making time to research this to get this here today. Yeah, anything you want to add, Bruce?
Yes, the only thing I can really add to the lay-down so far is that vehicles we're seeing nine to twelve months out, ordered through the standard process. Fleet Services has been very resourceful in working with the sheriff's office to purchase stock units whenever they're available that meet the sheriff's office specifications.
Which meant you've gone statewide and looked at different dealerships, right?
Different dealerships, different contracts, and we have managed to procure a number of vehicles. However, looking out ahead, in 2025, the eighteen additional positions, we have an opportunity to better posture ourselves to support the sheriff's office.
And I think that Bruce's statement in there to meet the sheriff's specifications is an important one, so we know that there's vehicles on lots and can see them, but one of the big things is EcoBoost, they need to be able to go fast, quickly, and so that's one of the major sheriff's specifications that makes some of this conversation a little more difficult, which is why we need to order to meet those specifications.
I'd like to make a motion. Okay, do a public comment first. Is that, are there any other questions?
So, we, yeah, we are here. Like I said, we could do this on the twentieth, but because we don't understand, not understand, because we don't know when that window's gonna close, we wanted to provide this to you as soon as possible. Whatever process you feel comfortable, we're on board with.
Okay, let's just do public comment, I know Mr. Pettit's here. Why don't you just sit there in the corner so we don't have to move the podium?
Sit in the corner?
I saw you on the Board of Health there.
Oh, you did?
From the phone, so.
Okay, John Pettit, I live on Rich Road, and I wanted to share a little bit of public comment, and part of this is about vehicles, and yes, we need to order vehicles, we need to have them. Part of it is about, my public comment has to do with the public safety sales tax, because I took note that one of the considerations is, is the idea of using that particular fund also to be able to pay a full bond payment. Well, under the supplanting element, and this is part of where I get to, about that supplanting element, the new deputies that were provided for within the realm of this mission and the approval was that it was for the officers being brought on, which represent about twenty percent of the entire staff. So, therefore, any use of those funds, and so far to date, you've gotten about a million and a half dollars of revenue in on that fund, any use of that fund has to be limited for only twenty percent of it is available, for instance, for the purpose of rent, office space, you know, or other elements that are part of the combined total. It's not available to say, we'll just take this much out of the fund to pay the bond payment for the entire agency, that isn't how it would work, and there would be major objection to that. So, just trying to keep the focus, you have a new county manager that's not necessarily completely familiar with all the different caveats that have we built up Thurston County to be right now, and we're trying to make some corrections, and since it's general public comment in a way, not specific, I will compliment our friend here, Tye, on his note that, no, the county buildings up there are more than seven point eight million dollars, and you were given a little bit, the county manager, a little bit of wrong information about the appraisal. I have a copy of the appraisal, that's part of what my business is, and as I've said before, if I can write a check for twenty mil, let's go for it, you know, I'll take it right now. You know, it's, because the property was valued by the Ming Study as having a value of a hundred and eight million dollars, and so, we shouldn't discard that one just because there's a couple real estate people that wanted to make a little extra money, same ones that are now making ninety thousand dollars a year for the county being in this building by being leasing agents. So, there's been a little history. So, all that being said, thank you for letting me make public comment, it complies with the law about action, and I think that's kind of an important one, we keep things in order, so, thank you much.
Okay. So, no one else for comments, so, go back to the business motion, meeting item, and Mr. Fornier, you had a?
I moved to approve the resolution authorizing Central Services to purchase eighteen Ford vehicles included in the approved 2024 to 2025 operating budget, and eighteen mobile and portable radios included in the approved 2025 ERNR equipment list for Thurston County Sheriff deputies.
Second. Motion in second to approve this resolution regarding sheriff's office vehicles. Discussion on the motion?
Oh, sure.
Commissioner Edwards.
Oh.
Sorry, you're in. Who's on?
Commissioner Edwards. Having lived through this, over the past twenty years that I was the elected sheriff, it's a nightmare when you can't get equipment when you need equipment, and it just really disrupts the whole operation. And I think it, somewhere along the line, I heard there was thirty-five cars down at Bud's Place, or whoever has the state contract and cowlets, and those cars are subject to be sold to Clark County, or Seattle, or whomever wants them, and so thirty-five cars aren't gonna last very long, and I appreciate you, you're looking out to get them now, instead of having everybody share cars, double up, all those things that cause inconveniences in law enforcement.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
I just wanted to add that, you know, this is a normal process that other agencies follow, we just had to approve purchase car vehicles for next year for intercity transit as well, and a couple weeks ago, so they're beating us a little bit to the curb on, they're higher on the list than we are, you know, as we move through this, so.
If I might, sure. Also, appreciation to Bruce and his team for coming up with this creative solution. This is a trust-building exercise with the sheriff's department. We want to show that we are flexible and nimble, and solutions-oriented, and appreciate the opportunity that Bruce provided to bring this forward to the commissioners in a timely manner. We could have just waited and let bureaucracy happen, and August twentieth, potentially the window's closed and the sheriff doesn't have his car, so we took a different future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, no other discussion, I'll call for the vote, I'll pay to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Four oh eight, Commissioner Items, anything you need to address?
We recently got a letter from the Washington Fraternal Order of Police. Have you seen that letter? I guess if everybody hasn't seen it, I think it's went in everybody's email.
Is it the DCYF stuff?
No.
No.
It's the same letter that, from, or similar letter to the one Corrections, the Corrections Union sent in as well.
Yeah, oh, it just, it's worth looking at, and then...
Oh, I read that letter.
Yep. Deciding if we need to...
I don't know what... I don't know what...
I don't know what they want.
What is, they didn't...
It was more informational, I took it as.
Yeah, I thought it was informational.
I wasn't sure they were asking us to...
Well...
...particular action.
Is there...
I, I read it, and I spoke to the county manager, and I think that's like what my conversation is.
You think we're, we're meeting, but I, I'd just like to get along with the union if I can, that's all, and they're representing him, and if you feel that's done, that's the only reason I brought that up. And, no action that we need to take, just, you know, maybe our next meeting or something, if there is, we'd have some knowledge about it. And then, this letter is from Griffin School District, Rochester, Olympia, and Temler. And I, I guess I didn't get a chance to ask you this, did, did your guy make it through the primary?
Yes.
Oh, so we might have a solution to that, okay, but...
Still close.
The, the schools are, are asking that...
I'm gonna meet with, I asked for a meeting with Patrick Murphy, and I think he's inviting other superintendents, and I invited Commissioner Mihia because we've been kind of the longest standing, and we're gonna try to explain a little bit about what's going on, because I think they're getting pretty one-sided information.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll report back to you guys on kind of how that meeting...
At some point, I think the suggestion is that they have a recipients group meet with us at some time, a committee, I don't know exactly what it boiled, Clallum County did something similar to what's being proposed here.
Okay, well, we'll report back, I think that's happening next week.
Okay, good enough, good, just, that's it, that's it for me.
Anything else?
I have a meeting, I have to...
Okay, then we're adjourned. Thank you.